Good evening. Sorry. I'm going to go ahead and call the July 19, 2018, meeting of the Cherokee County School Board to order at this point. I would ask Connor Lyons, class of 2018 Cherokee High School, to come up and lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Connor. As a school board, we've made improving the career education and increasing student involvement as a top goal for the superintendent and his staff for this year. The Office of Communications, this last school year, launched a series of videos to educate the community about our outstanding Career Technical and Agricultural, or CTAE, education programs. So far, the videos have been created to highlight six programs: agriculture, architecture, criminal justice, engineering, healthcare science, and marketing. More videos are planned this school year with the goal of highlighting all of our programs. You can access all of these videos by clicking on the Careers button on the CCSD website on the homepage. The videos are also available on the CCSD's YouTube channel. Each video shows students in the class participating in a hands-on learning guided by teachers with professional expertise in their chosen career field. The videos also highlight our partnership with some local businesses and industries. I've watched all of the videos and wanted to share one of them with you tonight. This video focuses on the Healthcare Science Career Pathway and features a teacher and students at Cherokee High School. It also highlights the important partnership we have with Northside Hospital Cherokee, which allows students to practice their classroom skills in real-world situations. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Argonis-Basto. I'm the Healthcare Science teacher here at Cherokee High School. The Healthcare Pathway is all about exposing students to the healthcare industry to explore their interests, to see if it's something they'd like to do in the future. The Healthcare Pathway is three consecutive year-long courses. The first course is called Introduction to Healthcare, and it's a very broad introduction to healthcare in general. We cover the legalities of healthcare, we cover careers in healthcare, first aid and CPR, very general information. And the second level is Essentials to Healthcare. Basically, it's anatomy, physiology, and pathophysiology. So the parts of the body, how they work together when they are supposed to work together, and then when there's an illness or a problem, what goes wrong, and how is it diagnosed or how is it evaluated. And then the third level is the CNA course, which is the Certified Nursing Assistant course. It's called Patient Care Fundamentals. So we learn how to take care of patients. That course will qualify students to take the CNA exam that's given by the state of Georgia and practice as certified nursing assistants. Career Tech courses are designed to prepare students for industry, or to have them job-ready when they leave high school. And the CNA course does that in a sense that when students meet all the requirements and do take the exam and pass it, they'll have a license as a certified nursing assistant, and they can work in healthcare arenas like hospitals, they can work in nursing homes, assisted living, places like that.
Employers are needing students who are ready to hit the ground running. Students absolutely have to be career-ready to be able to compete in the job market today. There's a lot of competition for jobs. Education requirements have changed, so they've got to pretty much come out of high school knowing what they want to do and having already had some training for it. Some students will go on to college, and then the job comes later. But some students are leaving our school with certifications already when they graduate that they'll use to get a job right away.
The reason why it's important for me to get my CNA certification is because I'm hoping to work with it in the summer to help pay for college. My career goal is to be an emergency room doctor.
A student that I see being very successful in this pathway has a good sense of empathy for other people, they have maturity. The student really needs to be accountable, responsible, attentive to safety, infection control. They need to have a very good global understanding of diversity of people, so that they're caring for people in the way that they need to be cared for, not the way that they're just taught how to do it. We have a great partnership with Northside Cherokee Hospital. They have donated a lot of equipment here, and they're always willing to send over some staff that could talk about their careers and how they got into those fields, and some different options that are available at the hospital for work after high school. We also have a good partnership with a local nursing home in the area, because without them, we can't certify our course. We need to have a nursing home to partner with us and allow us to come and do clinicals and work with their staff and their patients as well.
We have some awesome healthcare internships, one with Northside Hospital.
The internship program, which we refer to as youth apprenticeship, is a partnership with the Cherokee County School District, in which we have high school seniors come into the hospital for an hour each day and shadow almost all departments in the hospital, that they may be able to experience healthcare occupations. And it's very important to us that we help the children of our community get some experience in fields that they are anticipating going into.
Hi, I'm Sarah Sogner. I'm a senior at Cherokee High School, and I am interning at Northside Hospital. The departments that I have been to have been pre-op, the OR, have been to ICU, respiratory, and radiology. So this internship has taught me what goes on behind the scenes of the medical field. So while at the hospital, I get to shadow and observe nurses and see what they do on a daily basis. This has probably been the best opportunity I have had throughout high school. I've learned so much, and I've learned what I want to do in the future and what careers I want to go into.
I would say to a parent that if your student shows a big interest in the medical field, medical dramas on TV, isn't really queasy when it comes to watching particular things, and they have a real curiosity about the body, I would say that this would be a good pathway for them to explore.
If you're interested in the healthcare program at Cherokee High School or any of the Career Technical and Agricultural education programs, we invite you to explore those at your local high school.
The Office of Communications and the superintendent and the staff for making sure that we have these options available for our students. Each of our high schools have a little bit different CTAE programs, but there's something for everybody out there if they try and find it, so appreciate that. We need to adopt the superintendent's recommended agenda for the July 19, 2018, school board meeting. That has been available online since last Thursday. I'm going to need a motion and a second, please.
I need to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, and a second from Mr. Chapman. All those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. We need to approve the minutes of the June 13, the June 21 public hearings on the 2018-19 milage rate, and the minutes of the June 21, 2018, school board meeting. All of those minutes have been available on the website since last week. I need a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 13 and June 21, 2018, public hearings on the 2018-19 budget, and minutes of the June 21, 2018, school board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Menard. I need a second.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Pool. All those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. We need to develop our consent agenda for the July 19 school board meeting. Let's go ahead and poll items A1, A2, A3, A4, and A5, as those are the recognitions for this evening. B items. Any school board members have anything? I have one item I want to discuss. Anyone else? If you change your mind, let me know. I'll let you have a minute. C1, consent. C2, we do have a speaker signed up, so we're going to go ahead and poll item C2. D1, consent. F1, we need to poll. F2, consent. G1, consent. H1, consent. H2, consent. Mr. Attorney, you have anything else for us this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. I1, consent. I2, consent. Mr. Superintendent?
I will have, with your approval, a couple of information items. I'd like for staff to do two short presentations as we begin school, just to make sure you're up to speed on a couple of things over the summer that we attended or addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And we do have executive session to discuss two student discipline matters. We will come back out in public session for the votes on those items. Let's go ahead. So the consent agenda. We have items C1, D1, F2, G1, H1, H2, I1, and I2, all passing on consent. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, as I just read.
Approve that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. All those in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, you've asked for a moment.
Please, just for a moment. Madam Chair, I wanted to, with your approval of the G1 agenda item, make an introduction to you tonight. We have with us Joy Silk, and I'm so proud of Joy. She is going to be serving now as the supervisor of digital learning. Now, Joy, if you'd stand, I want to say a few nice things about you. Okay? We're so proud of Joy. She's one of your Former Teachers of the Year, and of course, she's just done great things while she's here. Eighteen years in the field, all with us. She's one of our homegrown teachers, and she has spent time as a teacher at Boston and at Hasty, at R.M. Moore. Most recently, in the classroom, she was at Ball Graham STEM Academy as a gifted resource teacher, and I remember her doing the Maker Lab up there, the Makerspace. And then she came to work for us as a coordinator in curriculum instruction, specific to digital content. So for her now to serve as supervisor of digital content, we're very excited. She's been a pivotal person in the department in us incorporating Canvas over the last year. She would tell you more like eighteen months, but we know that you've seen it at the board level, at least for the last year. She was our Teacher of the Year for the county in 2015. She's also, of course, garnered other awards as a teacher, such as things like Who's Who. She holds a specialist from Piedmont in CNI, and so she stayed right in that field. This is one of those leaders that didn't have to go the AP and principal route. She stayed plugged into curriculum and has really made a name for herself. She's here tonight. I know I saw her husband, John, and her two children, Mason, who's 15, and Amelia, 12, as well as her parents, Nathan and Judy. Judy was also a Teacher of the Year, so we're talking mother-daughter, Teachers of the Year for the county, and I know that Nathan and Judy are so proud of her, as well as her family. I think she even brought flowers in from Ann Nekvital, who's with her. One of her duties, even though she's supervisor of digital content, she'll supervise media specialists and coordinate those activities. And I see Jennifer Lewis with us as well. So very proud of Joy. If you'll please join in congratulating her tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and congratulations, Ms. Silk. Anyone signed up for public participation tonight, Ms. Jacoby?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead on to the recognitions, the A items.
We'll now begin our recognitions. When your name is called, if you would please come up front toward the superintendent, so he and the school board can recognize you. If you are a student, after you are recognized by the superintendent of the school board, you'll be presented with a certificate of recognition by your principal. A1, recognition of Georgia Library Media Specialist of the Year, Jennifer Lewis of Indian Knoll Elementary School. Ms. Lewis, who is our school district's Media Specialist of the Year, was named the state winner by the Georgia Library Media Association and Georgia Association of Instructional Technology. She was surprised with the school district award by the superintendent in March. In April, she was named as North Central Georgia Regional Winner by the associations, and she was surprised last month with the state honor at the Georgia Library Media Association's Summer Institute in Peachtree City. Winners are selected based on the following criteria: leadership role through staff development, committee involvement or professional advocacy, involvement in professional organizations, promotion of information technology utilization and literacy, promotion of reading and literature, involving parents and/or the community in the library media program as partners, working collaboratively with the educators in your building, innovative techniques used in your library media program, and deliberate and ongoing professional development as a learner, which is relevant to media services. Congratulations to Jennifer Lewis. And as a note, this is the second consecutive year that Cherokee County has earned this title, and last year's winner is here with us, as the superintendent noted, Ms. Nekvital. A2 is our recognition of Georgia High Schools Association Region and State Champions, and this evening we will recognize track stars from Cherokee High School and their coach, Georgie Anderson. Michael Hoag, 800-meter and 1600-meter region champion. Lexi Allen, 3200-meter region champion. Chatham Brown, 100-meter region champion. Savannah Devine, pole vault region champion. Ellie Johnson, discus region champion. And the 4x400, 1600-meter relay region champions, Tyleek Brown, Marcel Robinson, Connor Lyons, and Demont Ellison. Congratulations.
Agenda item A3, recognition of CCSD's Office of Communications, winner of five national awards from the National School Public Relations Association. The National School Board Public Relations Association annually honors the best publications and electronic media produced by school districts nationwide as part of their communication efforts. The school district won a Merit Award for Social Media, one of only seven awarded to school districts nationwide, and that was for its hashtag #CCSDFAM campaign. Launched in July with a video by the Chief Communications Officer, Barbara Jacoby, the campaign led to posts throughout the school year on CCSD's district and school social media platforms by employees, parents, students, and partners celebrating successes, encouraging unity and embracing the theme of family. See a CCSD's annual report of district progress, which showcases important achievements and data for the second consecutive year, one honorable mention in recognition of work by Carrie McGowan, the Office of Communications Supervisor of Strategic Planning, Community Relations, and Publications. In addition, CCSD Connections of the School District's monthly parent newsletter, launched this past school year by Ms. Jacoby, earned an honorable mention award, as did the Teacher Appreciation Day message to the teachers in our classrooms and my heart, and the video news story, "CCSD Grad's Return as Teachers." So congratulations to Ms. Jacoby and Ms. McGowan.
A4, recognition of CCSD's School Nutrition for winning a Georgia USDA Best Practice Award for Farm-to-School Programs. Under the leadership of Director Tina Farmer and coordinators Linda Dietrich and Tiffany Ridley, the program has been named a Georgia USDA Best Practice Award winner in the category of Farm-to-School Programs for the second consecutive year. A diverse group of judges met to consider each entry, with only 50 Georgia USDA Best Practice Awards bestowed statewide. Congratulations to our School Nutrition Department. A5, recognition of recipients of the 2017-18 school year Judy Johnson Memorial Scholarship. This Cherokee County School Nutrition Association-sponsored scholarship honors the service of a dedicated school nutrition employee, Judy Johnson, and provides at least one scholarship per year in the amount of $1,000 to a graduating senior or a former graduate from the Cherokee County School District. For the 2017-18 school year, the association donated $2,000 in order for scholarships to be awarded to two recipients. Applications were solicited by the association, and the five-person committee was comprised of a CCSD school board member, principal, school counselor, and two community members. The applications were reviewed and scored, and subsequently chosen as the recipients are Cherokee High School senior Jamie Bricker and Aaron Wehant, who is a current Kennesaw State University junior. Congratulations. And I would ask the scholarship recipients to please stay up front, and if the School Nutrition staff who are here would please come up front, we'd like to take a group photo of you all.
This concludes the recognition portion of the meeting. Thank you. All right, thank you. We're going to go on to the B items for this evening. Did any school board members have anything to share? I have one item. Wanted to congratulate my fellow board members on us winning the GSBA Quality Board Level 1 Award this year. We completed all of our training, we did other items that we all needed to accomplish along with the superintendent and staff, and so we did receive that at the GSBA meeting that we attended in Savannah, and I appreciate all the work that went into that. We're going to strive to push to go on to Level 2 now, and I think the superintendent has some ideas, or some staff has some ideas, to share with us about what we need to do for this next level.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. We wanted to speak to you about that next level. It's considered to be a Board of Distinction level. There is a little bit of a shift every time you move up in the potential for awards. There's a little bit more of an expectation. Mike has really bird-dogged this one for us, and so I asked him to take just a few moments tonight, just so that these requirements are on your radar. Some things will be that staff can really assist with, but then there are other things that we just need to make sure that you're aware of going into the school year. Mike?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As the superintendent said, just a few minor changes to the requirements. A minor change to your strategic plan and how that is laid out. More of the vision project recommendations included in your strategic plan. You've actually already met that requirement this year. The request was for five, and the award that you won this year, what we would be pursuing next year would be 10, and you have at least 10 already in your plan. The topic that we want you to focus most on, though, is the local Board of Education training requirements. Going to the next level will require that a majority of you exceed the annual training requirements by a minimum of three additional credit hours, so at least four of you would need to get at least 12 hours of training. Yes, sir.
There were quite a few of us, I think, that exceeded. I don't know if we had the majority that exceeded, but I think that's easily obtained. Okay?
And the chairman and superintendent and I also discussed, there is a requirement to establish a committee consisting of community members and board members and a central office administrator to do a governance assessment that's much like the school board self-assessment that is required of you. So those are additional requirements to move on to the distinguished level of recognition by GSBA, and it's sequential. You can't leap to, as we've discussed before, exemplary board. You can't go from step one to step three, or obviously, that's what we would recommend you do, but you have to go in sequence.
Thank you. I think we have opportunities to attend, like GSBA, NSBA, online training. Mr. Roach can do some training, so if we can, the majority of us, kind of strive to get more than the nine, try and get 12, I think that that's something that we can do. And I think the community committee that we need, we might be able to call on some of our VILLA participants to help us out with that. So, very good. Thank you. On to item C2. Need a motion and a second, and then we're going to have a speaker for that item.
I move to approve the school board consideration of superintendent's recommendation for approval of technical modifications to school board policies. Final reading.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Menard and Ms. Pool. All right. Mr. Thomas Weaver, you have signed up to address item C2. I do believe you understand the parameters of speaking to us this evening. You will have three minutes, and I'm going to ask Ms. Coleman to help me as a timer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Thomas Weaver, and I do reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. The purpose of placing my remarks this evening is in regards to school board policy JCAC, which is included under the school board's considerations tonight on technical policy modifications under second reading. School board policy JCAC provides constitutionally mandated difference monikers, which are apart from the constitutionally mandated difference monikers that the school board has saw fit to incorporate on consent under item C1 for school personnel. And as many of you may recall, approximately one calendar month ago, I did send a mass letter to each of you via email, and I also did email the superintendent one week prior to, about one week prior, week and a half from now ago, I do believe, asking that each of you consider as to whether or not it would be appropriate to incorporate the same constitutionally mandated monikers in the school board policy JCAC to the same extent as what you do for your personnel. Specifically, I asked for the inclusions of the terms genetic identity, pregnancy, past or present military affiliation or status, and also political beliefs to be included under school board policy JCAC. So to the extent that the board is certainly welcome, or doesn't have to, or could choose or not choose to do so, I just personally think, as a private citizen and taxpayer, that it would bode well for the approximately 43,000 students to whom you will assume and continue to provide care for next month, and it'll also be consistent with the 10th and 11th arms of your major board belief statements, in that you will provide something to them that is consistent with student leadership on your behalf, and also inclusive of the cultural, social, and societal differences amongst your student body populace.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Yeah. I have a question. So my understanding is this comes down between how we've specified, between the differences between staff and student as far as our policies, and I just wanted to get from Mr. Roach exactly why we might have chosen different paths related to that. I think I've understood from explanation, but I think it bears consideration as we vote on this.
JCAC...
JCAC applies to students, student-on-student conduct. The other policy applies to employment practices. Because there are different federal statutes dealing with employment practices that prohibit certain conduct, for instance, genetic screening. You can't genetically screen employees to determine which ones are predisposed for disease to make hiring decisions. That applies only to employment. We wouldn't genetically screen children in any means, anyway. So I think there are significant differences between the application of the two policies and federal statutes that apply to the hiring practices that wouldn't apply to student-on-student situations and harassment.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the technical modifications to the school board policies. On final reading, all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. We're on down to item F1. I believe they've prepared a green sheet for us this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is the Proposal Evaluation Criteria Form for the third phase of our security foyer build-out. You will remember that over the past year, we did reconstitute the Safety and Security Committee, and there were several recommendations found within that. One of the recommendations was to, as best as physically possible, speed up the build-out of those. We had initially designed for there to be four years, four phases, four budget cycles for the build-out of that. We've squeezed that down to this year being year three. So we're really taking two years, putting it together. You'll see the amount. I will tell you, the green sheet, the company that presented, there is just one company, but it is the company that you awarded the bid to last year. We've been very, very pleased with their work. You'll see a good score reflected there, not just based on relationship and password, but also the availability of subs, the way they work their subs, and their pricing. That pricing indicated there is for multiple. Again, we're taking two phases, so it's a little bit bigger bite at the apple, but within that, we believe we can get this done. I think the timeline bill had said was like even spring break, getting through spring break. The one thing that we've been doing, we did in Phase One and Two, start cherry-picking and picking our easiest foiers, while at the same time looking at those tougher ones and doing design. So the design work is almost complete, we're ready to jump in, and the bid there that's reflected, the price is below what we had budgeted for that ending out, that build. So we brought that before you and would entertain your recommendation.
So thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion regarding this?
I make a motion that we use, do I say the name, Womack, Lewis, and Smith to construct the 15 security foiers, nine at the elementary school and six at the middle schools, Phase Three.
Okay. So that we have a motion and a second. Any discussion points?
Based on Dr. Hightower, based on your comments and the item down here that suggests that the proposal amount is under budget, that's the rationale for giving them the total 25 points, I guess, on pricing. It's hard for me to rationalize that when we only have one price.
Right. Well, also, when we evaluated it, they had to look at project by project, and they consistently came in at or below on each of the four years. Obviously, they don't have competition. We like it. I mean, some of it is, do you trust your own pricing?
Yeah.
And we've had architects and engineering staff work on that, and we felt really good about the price being a tight price.
Yeah. And I know this is a rather small effort and something that a lot of them aren't necessarily going to want to put out from, they'll come out of the woodwork for a new elementary school or high school.
Sure, there is, yeah. We do compete for bids on projects like this. I think the scale, I thought the scale might help us just a little bit, but, and if the pricing was off, I would be nervous with bringing you just one bidder tonight, but we have such a good history there with this company. I feel, I wouldn't have, we would have halted and not even brought it before you tonight if we were nervous about the proposal.
Such a specialty project.
Yeah.
And then having history with us, if they're underbid, history with us as well, we'd probably give them full credit.
Perfect. All right.
Any other questions or comments, school board members? Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve Womack, Lewis, and Smith as the company to construct the security foiers, the 15 security foiers this year. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Mr. Superintendent, you had a couple of items you wanted to share with the board this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We wanted to report to you very quickly on just a couple of things. The first, you had seen reported in the news over the last week or so, some of the staffing woes in some of the metro area districts. We saw that play out a little bit through the AJC. We've seen a little bit of drama about bus drivers in one district, and then we saw teachers, and it was reported several of the larger metro districts like DeKalb, Cobb, Fulton are starting shy. DeKalb was reporting 325 teachers shy for the start of the year, and I felt it was worth your while to hear from our HR department relative to our summer and how we spent it and what we're looking at as we start the school year. So Rick, if you don't mind, spend just a few moments with the school board, giving them a quick summary.
Sure, thanks, Dr. Hightower. We've had a really successful summer. We currently are only sitting on 12 vacancies, as far as teachers are concerned, so, and then, as you know, all the principals and APs are back, so that was as of this morning, so we're probably down to about eight, because I know we hired a few people today. So we're excited that we're almost done getting teachers where they needed to be. As far as a summary from this hiring season, we hired 250 new teachers. 55 of those are from growth and class size reduction. We had 105 regular resignations, and then we had 90 retirements. Overall, our retention rate's 96.2%, which is fantastic. So people are really...
Much, much higher than the industry average.
Absolutely, by about six points.
Right. You do during the summer often have resignations, so that does, and that was showing this morning when we started today, really that summer resignation is just some of the late things that happened. And we really needed, you know, the principals needed to get their APs in, that's their interview team, they're back now. We don't perceive any of those openings to be a struggle. We'll end up being fully staffed day one. Correct? Awesome. For us, we felt like that was a good news story. The things that we've done to hire and retain teaching staff, we're really proud of, and wanted you to know where we were in the face of some of the news that we're hearing around the metro area. Wanted to also take a moment, you earlier in the year approved for us to send a team of district-level staff and the zone lead principals down to Orlando this summer for a Model Schools Conference, and from everything that I'm hearing, even from superintendents where I'm serving on committees and work conferences, that the Model Schools Conference is the conference in curriculum instruction right now. And so we were so proud of our team. They went down and we had some presentations we did. We won an award as an innovative district in curriculum instruction. And I wanted Nicole, Dr. Holmes, to spend just a few minutes and make sure you knew exactly where we were spending that money.
Thank you. The Model Schools Conference is designed for innovative educators from all over the country, and we were fortunate enough to be able to attend, along with 5,000 other educators there. Over 100 sessions were offered. We had 25 model schools that presented and 11 model innovative school districts that presented, all with a common purpose. How do we transform learning moving forward? We were very fortunate to be able to take six of our six zone principals with us. We took the executive directors from school operations, and we took a team from CNI as well. So we had a great team to go down and split up so that we could attend 100 sessions and bring back great information here to the district. We were able to partake in sessions with trailblazers such as Dr. Bill Daggett, our own Dr. Alyssa Pianowski, Dr. Tyrone Howard, top-notch people that are well-known in the field of education. Also, as a result of us being recognized as an innovative school district, we were able to present two sessions on transitioning from a system of schools to a system of effective instruction, which included information about our journey with rigorous curriculum design. We talked about DT4L, our Data Teens for Learning. We also talked about our instructional framework that was featured, and had quite a few people to comment on the progress that we've made within just a couple of years. Also, we were interviewed by the Chief Learning Officer of HMH, and that's the picture that you see there. That was a surprise for us, and we got a chance to do that, and we talked about our journey, CCSD's journey to this point. And that was featured and live broadcasted and shared all over the company. 3,000-plus employees were able to see that live. So we were excited about that opportunity as well. Gave us an opportunity to really collaborate with innovative districts that are really moving to the next level in education, and that's where we're striving to be. We got a chance to share ideas, to network, to exchange numbers, so that we can further our collaborative efforts in making sure that our school district is a premier school district. So it was an exciting opportunity for us to be able to present, as well as for us to feed ourselves in terms of professional development for us.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Holmes?
You also received a book, the Model Schools, the Bold School Book by Weston Kishnik. It's up on your, Kishnik is up on your desk, so I hope that you'll enjoy that. It's a quick and easy read, but it also sheds light on what we're trying to do in terms of blended learning here in the district.
And we did have Dr. Kishnik come and do a PD with our principals in this building on blended learning, and I think it really got a lot of our administrators around the corner on establishing a vision for blended learning at their local schools. So we appreciated the time that he gave us during the school year.
Thank you. I opened the book, and it said, "Technology is awesome, teachers are better." So I like that little, I mean, and so working together to do the blended learning and getting so that our students help perform, I think that's awesome. Thank you. Very good stuff. Any other questions or comments from school board members? We have two items that we are going to discuss in the executive session, so we're needing a motion to go into executive session. We will come back out for a vote on those items, a public vote. Okay, we are back in session, and we did have two discipline issues that we considered. Do I have a motion on one of them?
I make a motion in the Student Disciplinary Appeal 18-108134 that the school board uphold the findings and disposition of the Cherokee County School District Tribunal Panel Hearing.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We had another tribunal?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion in the Student Disciplinary Appeal 18-148335 that the school board uphold the findings and disposition of the Cherokee County School District Tribunal Panel Hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. All those in favor? Six in favor, all those opposed?
I must recuse myself from this vote.
You're going to recuse yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not opposed, so you're going to recuse yourself.
Right, I recuse myself, yes.
So we have six in favor, zero against, and one abstention. Okay. Very good. We are now adjourned for this evening. Thank you.